Work session, Monday, May the 3rd.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the date's incorrect on my agenda.
What?
The date's incorrect on my work session agenda.
With the...
I've changed the date on the agenda.
I'll correct it.
It's general business, we're gonna talk about the fee schedules. I think Mark's gonna join us, he said he might be a little bit late. And Bill's out west, looking at cattle, probably.
Probably so.
We'll go ahead with the fee schedules. Who's up first?
Well, you can look out in the room, you can see a nice audience out here today. So, what you have out here is everyone that has a fee schedule for you all to look at today. Now, I believe you were sent a copy of the current fee structure and the proposed fee structure.
Correct.
And I believe the only change to the, what I'm calling the proposed fee structure, was the handout that Travis just handed you that had one change to it.
Right.
So, if you take these, and I'm just taking them in the order that I believe your email listed, I believe your fire inspection fee schedule was the first one in that packet.
First one I've got.
We'll start with the fire then?
Emergency management, yes. It's very simple.
Just come to the podium, everybody can hear you.
Do you have any questions about our... I mean, they haven't changed in the last few years, appreciably.
Is there any questions, John?
I have no questions.
Nope.
These are, they've been in effect now, this will be two years?
That's right. I think the last time we changed them, we put a cap on the maximum fee because we had a few places where the fee was tremendous. And other than that, they haven't changed in quite some time.
Okay. Do you wanna vote on each individual, or just...
We'll adopt them at the regular meeting.
Yeah, we're just here now to hear what logic was placed into them, in case there are any questions.
And discuss.
Now, I would point out, there is one change to the proposed emergency management schedule. And that is, in the current year, you have an ABC permit that is listed at $35 on your current. In your proposed, that fee has been removed and moved into building inspection. And Daniel, would you wanna...
I was gonna mention that, but then I had to assume that was the one change that Travis had.
No.
Okay, so I was off base there. At any rate, a few years ago, we decided to try to make our fees match up with other counties as best as we could. When we looked at Ash County, they were charging $110 for an ABC permit inspection. We were currently charging 75, I think, through Travis's office, and I charged nothing. So, to bring us into line with that, we decided that I would start charging $35. Well, we've found that it's sort of a hassle for the folks that are coming in because they gotta go upstairs and write, "A building inspection's a check," and then they gotta come find me and write me a check. And it's all for the same permit. So, it makes logical sense to just combine the two into one and put it in building inspections and go on with it. That was the, that's the rationale behind that change.
You are assuming a government operates on common sense?
Well, we'd like to think that we're capable of it here, so...
Thank you. I agree with that.
That'll just let them write that one check and...
Plus, they don't have to, they don't have to run down both of us.
Michelle, any questions?
No.
John?
I don't believe so.
Nope, I'm good.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe your next one is your solid waste disposal fees. And David Spicer's here to talk about that as well.
As you can see by what you have before you proposed and what has been in the last little while, there is some changes that has taken place there. We took out being charged by the yard, that has been done away with. We also went on construction and contractors $50 per quarter to match up with seasonal business. That was, that was done in that. Also, I have made a scale on the last page there. This sliding scale is so that if folks bring in more than 15 tons a week, they get just a little bit of a break on their solid waste. So, that goes all the way up to 35 tons or more, and the minimum on that's gonna be $70. So, we're a little better shape now, as far as being able to relax our fee schedule just a little bit there because of the reduction, because of the new contract that we signed with Republic for the landfill.
So, what you're saying, we passed, passed that savings along to the taxpayer then?
A little bit, yeah. And this is only going to affect a couple of vendors who's gonna bring in more than 15 tons a week. That's quite a bit. And we felt like we ought to give them just a little break, if it's your pleasure.
Go on, go ahead.
All right, your scrap tire charge.
Yes, that is a change.
Five tires per vehicle, per year are free. How are you maintaining a record of the vehicles? Have you got the vehicle ID numbers?
We try to do that in maintaining what vehicles come through with tires on them. And the people are informed at that time that that is the five tires that they allotted for that vehicle at that time. The records, we're trying to keep records as best we can with that, so that everybody has the same privilege there, as far as that goes.
Okay, so if a guy owns three pickups, he's got 15 tires he can bring in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
May I comment on that? One of the alternative ways of doing that is to require the individual to bring their registration in at the time of disposal that proves the vehicle is actually titled in their name or registered within their name.
Okay.
And that may be a consideration.
To me, the admin, the time that we're gonna be spending verifying, entering, and everything else isn't worth it.
Coming from an organization that did that, the initial time spent outweighs the benefit, but the historical value of creating that spreadsheet and quick referencing it allows you to make that up over time.
If you, how's your computer system?
Right now, the computer system is running, it's pretty good. The program that we use...
You've got a program that you can track vehicles, or you're gonna set up a spreadsheet on your...
You can, you can set up individual accounts in that, as far as the viewer, the team viewer is concerned. And that allows you to, to track different vendors, different people. It, it works it out.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna spend in two hours of admin time to track 20 tires. But if you've got it, if you've got a handle, I'll, I'll trust you, and I have no problems with it.
Can I ask one other question? Because I may have missed it.
Go ahead.
David, when you mentioned the, section two says owner-operator residential business?
Yes.
Did you say 15 per quarter?
Yes, 15 per quarter on that.
Okay.
And it's, we changed the one on contractors and construction, or construction contractor to 50 versus 15 on the old one to match the small business, or seasonal business.
Anything else? Michelle? I got one question about the animals, number nine.
Okay.
Animals $60, mortality $60 per ton. What about wild game and stuff DOT picks up on the side of the road, or somebody brings in a dead deer, or...
If we dispose of deer carcasses, it's a minimum of $20. That doesn't, that's not gonna qualify as far as tonnage. You know, a deer's gonna weigh, at best, a huge deer, probably 120, 25 pounds. So, we're just charging a $20 minimum on that for disposal of the deer.
What about, are you charging DOT?
No.
No charge for them?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank God we have a gay buffalo in the county.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next?
Next is the emergency medical services.
Good afternoon. On the fee schedule that I've submitted, there are actually only three different types of transports that have an increase. And that is because those are the three that Medicare has made an adjustment in payment in, so we can collect more. All of those are emergency transports. One of them's basic life support emergency, the other one's advanced life support emergency, and the other one, an ALS too, is what you have when you're running a cardiac arrest or something like that, where you're using a lot of equipment. And by increasing those, we are gonna get about a $31 a call. For those types of calls, increase, because most private insurance follows suit with what Medicare allows.
You answered my question, what's ALS, advanced life support?
Yes.
Okay. I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
Michelle? The, how's your collection rate running?
Actual collection, what happens with Medicare and with private insurance you contract with, you have to do what they call a contractual allowance or a write-off. Medicaid, which is getting ready to transition, is horrible. Medicare's a little bit better. So, in overall collection rate, you have to count that write-off because you can't count it as an outstanding debt. So, using that, right now, it's about 74%. Medicaid is getting ready to go to managed care July 1st, so we're not sure what's gonna happen with Medicaid, so we'll have to wait and see.
Michael, any questions? Okay, thank you.
And I believe your next one is Allegheny in motion.
So, what I presented, we actually do not have any changes from last year. We left everything the same as far as our fares.
I watched the Ash County Commissioner meeting the other day. And they had their public transport in there. They're charging $150 to go to Charlotte. Have you compared our rates with theirs?
Our rates are lower than theirs.
Why?
Because the way it is right now is...
For the elderly and disabled, I can understand, they're on fixed income.
Right. And we still get complaints over the $80 going to Charlotte, is what we charge per person. So, if two people go, that's doubled. And then there's not a whole lot of people that do ride that.
I used to take people to the Charlotte airport on the side from Roaring Gap. 150, that was six years ago.
We can look into it.
Of course, I was basically a taxi taking them down there. But if we look at Ash County, and just to compare, I mean, this is a big difference.
And I can look at other surrounding counties, too.
I would like to do that before we set these rates. Now, the elderly and disabled, I support that because they're on fixed income, and a lot of these people, it's a stretch to be able to do the $1 and the 10. The VA hospital or clinic fares, phew.
Most of the VA people get reimbursed. Most of the veterans do get reimbursed. And if they do not, then we do put it under elderly and disabled funding.
How do you, how do you know, do you know how much you're being reimbursed?
Not the amount, but if they do not receive reimbursement, then they can get paperwork from the VA.
I'm 90% disabled.
Right.
Whenever I was going to Salem, Virginia, I was collecting, I believe, around $86, and that was six years ago. So, they're making out, you're charging, or we are charging, I should, not you personally, but the county commissioners are saying, if you're going to Salem, Virginia, how much, anybody see it in there?
Do it this...
Salem, Virginia, $50. They're $36 to the good, and I'm sure it's gone up since then. Now, you're right, some don't. I was medically retired, but I made too much money in my retirement, so I don't get reimbursed for travel.
A lot of veterans don't get reimbursed...
Yeah.
...on their travel.
Hmm.
It's 124 miles one way to Salem.
Yeah, that's 240 miles, and if I remember correctly, we were being reimbursed 52 cents a mile. So...
So, what's your request?
I would like to, for the out-of-county rule, to Elkin, Winston-Salem, Greensboro, let's compare, let's find out how much Ash is charging, and see if we can do a little bit more, because we're losing money on this right now.
And you think we are losing money on that trip?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
But you don't know how much?
It just depends on how long we're there, how many people are going, if we can coordinate the trip with something else or not.
I'll give you an example. Federal government is allowing 52 cents a mile right now. If it's business travel, 52 cents. Charlotte is roughly 220 miles. So, that's costing you $110. And I guarantee you, your van does not get the gas mileage of my car. We're charging 80. If you go to, if you go to Ash County and you use their public transport, I believe it was $150 to go to Charlotte. So, we're charging about half of what they're doing.
How many trips, do you know how many you're making?
Altogether?
Yeah, out of the Roaring Gap area, or...
Oh, for just that location, I don't know. I would have to pull some type of report by location.
Michelle?
I mean, I just don't see with the price of gas, how we, how we're doing these rates. I mean, like you said, the elderly and disabled, I can see that, but, you know, even transportation to work, $2 per trip.
And we actually have a grant for that.
Do you? Okay.
Well, that works out.
We, to go to the VA, to go to the airport, we use our rope funding, and that is state funds also, where you have to at least get 10% of the overall cost returned.
Okay, now, that changes the complexity of things. As far as, you know, trips to the airport, if you can afford an airplane ticket, be able to afford the transport.
Right.
A question for you. When, just say we're going to the airport to pick up somebody, that flight's delayed an hour, hour and a half, you still wait for that person?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you're paying your driver for another hour, hour and a half, that he could be on the road coming back?
Right, and after the first two hours, it's $10 for every hour after that.
So, you do recover some of that cost?
Yes, sir.
What about parking fees? Do you pay that, or does the person using the transportation?
Most of the time, they go to the cell lot, and there isn't a fee.
Well, the consensus of the board is to hold off on Allegheny in motion, do a little study on that, and bring it back to the mid-month meeting, and we can vote on it then.
Yeah. We'll have to, we'll have to make a decision by one July, if I'm correct, Mr. County Manager.
And seeing as how, I think we're gonna have a couple others that may need some defining, it may be best, once we get through this session, that for those departments that have some rates to go back and do a little review of, that maybe you consider tabling adoption altogether of the rates for this evening's meeting, and put that off to your mid-month, and that way you do the rates all in one conjunction.
Does that, for consensus?
That's fine with me, because whenever we get to the fee schedule for the fairgrounds, I was gonna recommend tabling anyway.
Yeah. So, we'll move this to the mid-month meeting?
Yes, but for the departments that have been, that we've gotten past, you know, they're certainly welcome, but they're excused from, from that mid-month discussion. But for these that may have to come back, we'll put an agenda item on there for the continuation of that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll keep it on the agenda for tonight, for a few of them?
I would, I would just...
Just move everything.
I would table it tonight and move it to your mid-month and allow it to be one universal adoption.
Table all of them.
We still gotta go through the fairgrounds.
Well, if we could, could we hit building inspection first?
Yes.
And I mean, we, we can come back. We still got building inspection and parks and rec, and then maybe talk about fairgrounds at the end, if that's...
Fine. He's got hay to put up, and it's a big hayfield, I know.
It is that.
What, 45 acres?
50 in the big one.
50, 50? I remember Clive talking about it was over 40, 45.
Go ahead.
First change is under the one and two family dwellings. We, it was that over 200 square foot was 10 cent per square foot over, which made a lot of confusion for contractors trying to bid jobs, because you'd have permits come out 20 cent, 50 cent. And in our petty cash, we just keep cash, we don't have change, so we're having to run, try to make change. So, going back to just $200, and anything over 1,000 square feet, remodel or addition becomes a house permit at 385. And there won't be much of a change in money either way, win or loss for the county.
Is there only change?
No.
Questions? Special thinking?
Then the, on the old one, you'll see there was a park model RV accessory building. We did away with that, because most time, if they're putting an accessory building for RV, it's either a garage, which falls under garage permit, or it's a small, tiny home, a house, then it'd fall under house permit. So, that was just clearing it up, we deleted that. And then going on down, we moved the park model permit under electrical from $100 to $200 to cover, because most time, for setting up a park model RV, it's a full, permanent setup. So, instead of just a meter, I'm checking sewer and water. Then we added solar panels, which most time now is a two-trip inspection, because you're checking service change and install the panels, instead of a $55 for just a service change. Deleted service ditch, because it's just something we never use, because if I'm going out to check a service ditch, they've already got either wire in there or gas line or water lines, so they have a permit to cover that. And we, the garage, it was set at 130. We just rounded it up to 150, make things easier, easier to remember. And the garage, as a bonus room, went from 150 to 200. And the ABC permit, combined with Daniel's, went from 110 down to 100. And I added the prefab buildings, which is like these little utility buildings people set up, instead of a garage, because they're one day, most time they're one-trip inspections. They come set them up, I make sure they're tied down, and made it a $55 permit instead of 150, to save people $100 on me doing one trip.
Questions? The only thing I've got, you have to make an unscheduled trip return. You've got a minimum of $20 charge... You've got a minimum of $20 charge, then it's 40 and a half cents a mile. With the gas prices, are you still at least breaking even, or are you losing?
Most house permits, the way they're going now, we rarely even use that. That's put in there, because the state requires seven minimums, some jobs I'll do a few more. But that's mainly in there for, if you call an inspection and you fail, I come back, you fail again.
Yeah.
If I'm going three trips on the same, then that's when we utilize that.
I noticed today, gas is, I think, $299 in town, and there were still people there buying it at $299, but then go down the street and save 11 cents. But you feel comfortable at that 40 and a half?
Yeah.
Questions? Michael got one.
Just a couple things, Travis. On your new sheet, you took out the phone call section down at the bottom.
Yeah.
And you added in, I think it was a change in the code, it went from 200 square feet to 400 square feet on your decks and utility buildings.
Yeah, the code went from 200 to, now it's 400, or any side that's over 12 foot in length.
Then you touched on it, you added tiny homes. That's the three changes on the bottom section of that.
There was a rule in there that said inspectors wouldn't take calls except into office and with carrying a cellphone. I take them everywhere, so wasn't a use having that rule published if I wasn't following it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So everybody's good with that?
Yeah.
Then we'll hit parks and rec. And by the way, our new parks and rec director, Mr. Cole Edwards.
Drew Plaugh.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. Glad to see you here.
Glad to be here.
Good.
Pretty straightforward. The only changes, we're dropping the pool and dropping tennis, and then the addition of Veterans Park.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Or make a comment?
Okay.
So there's been on and off discussions last year about Dunkin' Rec and the pool and the use and the non-use and the opening and the closing. I don't believe there has been some official vote by the board commissioners to officially say, you're either gonna open the pool or you're gonna close the pool. Everything in this budget relates around the closing of that pool, and we've talked about that in different discussions. Now, I would, I would like, at your mid-month meeting, for there to be a consideration of officially voting to open the pool or to close the pool, so that we will have that formal, in place, and available for any questions.
We'll have that on the mid-month schedule then, on our agenda.
In doing that, I would, I would like to ask that we hold this fee schedule, so that we don't appear to be premature in adopting a schedule without consideration of the pool and its future.
I would support that. It also affects us on the RFP that is on the agenda for tonight, because part of the RFP for the new telephone system is installing a telephone system at the Dunkin' Recreation. So if we go with that RFP, saying that we want a fee or a price on installing a phone, and we decide we're gonna close it, then that RFP has gotta be canceled, and we've gotta rewrite it and take it out to Dunkin'.
Well, it's my understanding that, go ahead and issue the RFP as is, and then just pull the Dunkin' Recreation part out of the RFP if the pool is closed permanently.
So that is gonna be, you want separate bids on every building? That's the only way that you can do it?
I don't know how, I didn't read the RFP exactly. Michael?
The RFP under specifications identifies Dunkin' Rec and identifies the address.
Right.
Now, if you go to the, and that's on page 18 of your information, if you go to page 19, where it talks about site-specific telephone requirements, it lists the county admin building, the county office building, the maintenance department, the transfer station, the sheriff's office, EMS, and social services. And then, if you look at page 20, which, page 19 is the telephone, page 20 is the broadband internet, it again lists the county administration building, the office building, the maintenance department, the transfer station, sheriff's office, EMS, and social services. Now, not, not to say that one is the other, but under the site-specific requirements, Dunkin' Rec is not listed.
We'll have that discussion at our regular meeting tonight.
Yeah.
We can certainly table. I'm not saying that's not, you know, a good idea, I'm just saying that there was no analysis performed, there was only identification of the facility on page 18. So the site-specific, if the vendors are looking at the site-specific, it's not included.
Any other questions, Sean?
I'll wait until we get into this tonight.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Michelle?
As far as this one.
The Veterans Park Shelter, full day and half day, is, I mean, is that considered like a full eight-hour day, or do they get it for all day long, or is, like a full day, four hours, and then?
Honestly, I don't know.
Okay.
You'll have to excuse me.
That's okay.
Just about ankle-deep in the water, I haven't dived all the way in yet.
Hours at Veterans Park are unofficially dawn to dusk. I would assume that's what a full day would mean.
I don't know that it's been rented.
Before we do our final discussion.
And what?
To my knowledge, I don't know that it's been rented for a full day like that.
Is it the whole shelter? I mean, like if you?
Yes.
Okay.
Bathroom's cooking area, everything. You've got the homeless people sleeping on the park, the picnic tables. Of course, it's better than the town, Kraus Park, you gotta run the homeless guy that's living underneath stage out before you can do anything there.
And that, that brings up another consideration of, I don't remember who may have mentioned it, but there are other facilities, you know, the lease rates on those. I know we're getting ready to talk about the fairgrounds as an example, but your Lions Club, you know, some of those, you know, is it, is it time to review the cost for those facilities as well? And if so, then that could coincide with your mid-month meeting also, and provide you with a full spectrum of that.
With the Lions Club, you're looking at two different venues upstairs, which is basically upstairs, outstair, outside, downstairs, cold weather, bad weather, more, more, there's kitchens downstairs, bathrooms downstairs. And what about the Veterans Park concession area?
And I know the least about those, but it seems like that a lot of people, and I'll use the Lions Club as an example, I don't know that it's broken down into, if someone leases the bottom part, and someone different leases the top part, the playground goes with the property. So if you're in the bottom or the top, they still get access to the playground. It's not like they're, you know, the top half gets the top half and the outside, it's an understanding, as I.
And it's a public playground.
So I think, I think we ought to describe it in that fashion, so that there's no confusion in those measures.
That, can we get all this done by the mid-month meeting, or? Okay. And, and the Veterans Park, what about? I know there's a lot of people that use just the picnic table area for meetings, exercise, just various things, but they, they don't have access to the bathrooms or the concession stand. I don't know what the bathroom schedule is to be open or closed. Summertime coming, I don't know if, if we need to have that open all the time, or?
David, what have you seen? You have the most knowledge of that.
We had a porta potty down there on the soccer field.
There is.
On the far side.
Yeah, but, you know, if we're not written it out, they shouldn't have access, and we'll never be able to keep it clean, we will never be able to keep the toilet paper in there or anything like that if we open it up for the general public. Now, on the weekends, there's a Spanish soccer league that's in there, they have that place covered up two days on the weekend, Saturday and Sunday. They gone the same you've ever seen, they come in with team buses, with team uniforms on, they've got a league, and we aren't collecting a dime from them.
I know today, we had our veterans committee meeting, advisory committee meeting, and there was a group down there that were, that were exercising.
Yeah.
And some of those people could not make it across to where the porta johnny is. I don't know if, if a porta johnny put over on the parking lot area, but I think it's something, we're here to serve the public, and that memorial, fairgrounds, or the Veterans Park is for the public. So we need to try to make some kind of accommodation, whether it be a porta johnny or some schedule to open the restrooms.
I wouldn't mind a porta johnny, but it's gonna put a tremendous burden on maintenance. I mean, maintenance, how often you go down and check for used needles down there now, David?
A couple, three times a week.
I mean, we've got maintenance department going down there to check inside the city limits for used needles, where drug addicts are using their needles and throwing them on the ground. Are we gonna put a guard on there next? With access to the bathrooms?
I just think it's a discussion that we need to have.
Just, just so we, as staff, can kind of get direction, are there, where are other like facilities that we can call and find out what type of charges that they, you know, we talked about it with transportation, where are some other locations that we can contact to compare rental rates?
Well, Port of Education rents the auditorium, but that's unique, and I thought they were doing Lions Club, too.
What about Press Call?
We're doing that.
No, it's.
Well, Charlie's, all on the county, it goes under, goes under Cole.
Okay.
And they've got all that kind of data.
County manager's just received some information that I'm sure he's gonna pass off.
Somebody wiggled around the corner, but, Colston.
I heard that.
Surry County is a good, good reference point. So we'll, we'll talk with Surry County and see what type of comparisons, and have that back to you.
The funny is, I think most of those folks that come and use those facilities during the day are not.
Not getting anything from the soccer league, I guarantee you that.
Therefore, I mean, if it's not being rented, and, and one of the reasons to rent and to collect rent would be to recoup some of the costs that, that we already require to take care of the facility. So I don't think those, those people, and I don't think that's a fair assessment of those folks that come and just sit down and eat lunch, or those that come and have their exercise program, they're not actually renting the facility, I don't think. So, you know, if, if they're renting the facility, we make sure that the bathrooms are clean, we make sure that the trash is up, and that they're stocked with the essential materials that is needed for hygiene, and that's all taken care of and open for those people who do actually rent that facility. So as far as the porta johnny being across the way, yes, I can understand that some of the folks that we have that visit that park are not able to go that far. So, you know, it would be a good thing to work on something, you know, I'm not sure if the cost effectiveness of us going to clean the bathrooms once a day would offset having to pay for a porta johnny.
I think that's something that you all need to work out, and just give us, give us your opinion, give us some cost numbers. It's not figured in this year's budget, but it's something we need to, need to consider. I know this past weekend, we had a, or this past Monday, we had a Veterans Memorial Day service, and the place looked really nice, and I'd like to compliment the maintenance department for pulling that off, restrooms, everything. It was very nice, and thank you.
Just something to think about, a porta johnny over there might take away from those aesthetics.
Maybe we can get somebody to paint it or something.
Better than an outhouse. Of course, it's too close to the creek for that.
But I think, from, from what I have seen and understand, opening that up for daily usage, aside from the increased burden that may place on the maintenance department, it also increases the possibility for water being left on, or overflows, or continuous cost of that nature. And that would be one of my concerns to, in addition to the burdens that gets passed on to the staff, but.
Endulism.
We've seen evidence of that. I don't know that we want to encourage any type of additional.
I think with the discussion, we'll come up with the pros and the cons and the cost, and we'll make a decision at that point. Any other questions, Sean?
I'm good.
Michelle?
I'm good.
Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Drew?
Thank you.
And I think your last one that you have is, I think it's just called Fee List, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
But that is the listing from the fairgrounds for the use of that facility. And I know that, that we've had some, some discussion and even a work session revolving around that, and, and I don't know that we're clearly at the light at the end of the tunnel at this point, so I would ask that you, we've tabled some, I would ask that would this be included? I think there's some additional discussion concerning the fairgrounds that needs to take place with, with this body, as well as a few others, and hopefully we can line all that up here in the coming weeks to have that discussion.
I'd agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine.
I'd agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm not aware of any other fees at this point.
Drew, any words of wisdom? John? Michelle? With that, if we're finished, we'll.
Motion to adjourn?
We'll move, this meeting will be adjourned, and then we'll come back for our regular meeting at 6:00. Thank you all.